Call this meeting back to all. Welcome everybody here today for our February 9, 2024, 2:00 p.m. special meeting. Our first item on the agenda would be, we need a motion to be able to go into closed meeting.
Ready for that motion?
Yep, ready for that motion.
Need a motion that the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors convene in closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.237-11829, discussion of the award of public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including interviews of bidders or offers and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Invited to attend the closed meeting as necessary are the county administrator, as they are deemed necessary, and their presence will reasonably aid the board in its consideration of the topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia 40, Section 2.23712.
All right. Jimmy?
We go into closed meeting, wording Mr. Tadlock?
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, a motion, second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we are now in closed meeting.
You good? Okay. Ready for the motion?
Yeah, ready for a motion?
All right, I need a motion that the Northumberland Board of Supervisors return to public meeting and certify by roll call vote that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting.
As Tommy used to say so, move with Mr. Tadlock.
What Tadlock said, yeah. All right, I got a motion, he's second.
Second.
I got a motion, second. Any other discussion? All right, if not, Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Brand?
Aye.
Mr. Basie? And I vote aye. All right. You need some action from us. You, me?
I got it.
Don't make any difference.
Um, I'd like to make a motion that Mr. Tadlock enter negotiations with UHY for their services for forensic auditing.
Second. All right, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against? All right. All right, we got that taken care of. Now, on this other thing we got now, we got some county administrative items.
Yes, sir. First item, Chief Alderson and I were talking earlier today and like to provide you all an update on the regional radio system. We have run into some other items that we want to make you aware of, and if it's okay, I'll ask Chief Alderson to come on up.
Come on up. You want?
All right, thank you, sir. All right, I just wanted to give you all an update on the radio system and some of the items that we've run into. As you know, this system is a very robust system over what we currently have, designed as a single cell simulcast system with us and Lancaster in it together. Three towers in Northumberland and now five towers in Lancaster. Our kickoff meeting was in September, and we've been doing some design reviews and planning thus far. And a couple of items that have come up from both Lancaster, myself, and the regional radios manager, Mr. Greg Hunter. One of the major concerns that Mr. Hunter has and has had in the inception of the planning part of this was the single simulcast cell that we currently are in design with. In that design, there are two what's called designated control points, basically the server or the brains of a system. So there will be a primary DCP, for abbreviation, in either Lancaster or Northumberland, and a backup in the other county. Part of the fault system, if you will, the radio system will go through several steps before it gets to what the final phase is called bypass. And in that, it has different mechanisms or redundancy so that we don't lose the entire system or an entire channel like we could lose now. So having said that, I'll go back to the DCP version. We have five what's called channels for simplicity. One of those is called a control channel, so it's a computer channel that if I key up a radio, that control channel is looking for one of the other four talk groups to dump my voice in. If we get into this bypass fault system, the DCPs, one of those will have to fail and go to the backup. So, an example of something that could happen is a severe weather event such as a tornado like we've experienced before, or hurricane that could actually come up through the bay and damage one of those deep DCPs. It only takes one to put us in the bypass. So if it does that, it's going to revert to the secondary DCP. So let's use the example that Lancaster gets hit and that DCP goes down. It now, the entire system is relying on the DCP that's in Northumberland. So what that does is we, the two counties, have to decide which county gets two channels and which county gets three channels. So remember I told you that we currently have five and one of those is a control channel? So hypothetically speaking, if we get the two channels, we have one control channel and one talk group. So now we've got one channel that's listening for everybody in Northumberland and Lancaster to dump into one channel. And vice versa, they have three. So it will be shared back and forth, but we lose that capacity, if you will. And I talked with the sheriff because of the originality of his planning with the group and to see the background information of that, and he told me that Mr. Hunter then had the same concerns, but with the cost of money, they decided to stay with the single cell design and move forward with that. So as we went through thus far and talked through this and looking at other design principles in this, along with the engineers from federal, the engineer from the regional radio group in Lancaster also has engineer on retainer through federal as well. Those two have been on just about every call we've had. We asked them to come back with a couple of options for us to see if we can make this even better than what we have now. And they did, they came back. We asked them to give us two cost option. One of those was to split the cell into two separate cells. So Northumberland would be on our own and Lancaster would be on their own. So those two DCPs I was talking about would now go to four. We would have a primary and backup in Northumberland, they would have the same thing in Lancaster. So if we lost one, we still had a backup. And again, we'd stay with five channels. So we could either have, we could have that third channel on that backup DCP. So it gives us that capacity back. So they came back with the two options. The first option was to split the cell. The second option was to add another channel or another frequency to that to give us that capacity back. So if we stayed a single cell, we would have three channels each we could go with if that bypass was to happen. So they came back with that and the cost to do that, if we were to split the cell, it would cost us $79,827 and it would cost Lancaster $133,044. If we looked at option two to add the sixth channel, the total cost was $373,7068 just to add a sixth channel.
So what was that again then?
$370,668. Three seven zero six six eight. So our share of that would have been $139,000. So splitting the cell is the cheaper option of that. They, between the group, L3 Harris and the engineers, it really wasn't advantageous to add the sixth channel because of the cost versus splitting the cell for $80,000 for us and $133,000 for Lancaster. I wanted to bring that to you all's attention because as we move forward in design review, that it doesn't change a whole lot of infrastructure. We have asked for a breakdown from L3 Harris of just what does that $79,000 incorporate for Northumberland County? On one of the calls, the engineer from federal asked just that very question, and basically it's licensing some software upgrades and a little bit of hardware upgrades in the radio system itself, not on the towers. This is inside the shelter in the racks. And the remainder of that cost would be the services of L3 Harris. The reason I want to bring that to your attention is we are getting closer every week to what's called DDR, Designated Design Review, which we will sit down and they, L3 Harris will give us and go through the entire design package of the radio. At that point, we will have some time to look that over and approve it. And once that's approved, they'll start ordering equipment. And from that point forward, things should pick up in pace. I know, Mr. Brand, you've been through this before, not necessarily the splitting the cell, but the design review and what goes on after that. And I think you would agree with me that things will pick up after that design review is done, and that's when we have to have our orders and affairs in order so that we can sign off and say this is what we want to do.
If we don't split the cell, and outside of us just having two channels, we don't split the cell, and pretty much what that means is Northumberland and Lancaster will be in the same, we're all on the same system that I'm going to refer to as being on the same system. If something happens in Lancaster and it shuts their system down, it's going to shut us down.
Yes, because we're tied in. Whatever happens in Lancaster affects us.
Right.
And right now, if Northumberland screws up, they can go through Lancaster.
It affects Lancaster.
So we do need to at least split that cell to where we're not, we don't have an impact on them, they don't have one on us.
Makes good sense.
Here's some other information while we're talking about that, is capacity of the system. The system that we are designing now or looking at now is going to have way more capacity than the current system we are using could ever even imagine. However, as the county grows and looking into the future, they have given us impact studies, and it's called a traffic loading plan, and they're looking at 60% of the users talking at one time. Now, I'm not going to say that will never happen, but that would be very, very rare. And 60% of that is both counts in that single cell. So that's a lot of public safety between sheriff's office, fire, and EMS. So at 60%, the capacity, the system can support 647 users on that system. And currently, in this calculation, there's a total of 570 radios that's going to be, not necessarily talking at the same time, but could be attached to the system. And that doesn't cause bandwidth use, but it's just identifying with that system. So even though that number is only a 77 difference, it seems concerning, but it's still, the capacity is there, it's just, it doesn't give us that future capacity. For example, if we add the school buses on there, that's more users on the system. The transportation department, if Mr. Tadlock wanted to put the building department on there, there's more users on it. So as we add users to the system, it takes up that capacity, if you will. If we even look at things such as mobile data terminals or CAD integration, that uses bandwidth on the microwave system. So I'm trying to forecast for this radio system what we could potentially see 10 to 15, 20 years down the road. So that's why I wanted to bring up the capacity part of that. And I'm not saying by any means that if the board decides not to split the cell, that we're going to be limited in what we can do because we're already designing a system that's far better than the current system we have. I just want to give you all the information to make a decision with, so that we can put the best foot forward, if you will. But Mr. Brand, like you said, whatever happens here impacts Lancaster, whatever happens in Lancaster impacts us. So with Mr. Hunter's concern of the bypass system and looking at this capacity in the future, the three of us, Mr. Hunter, Chief Smith from Lancaster, and myself, met and talked about it, and we feel that splitting the system into two is probably the best now at this price, rather than waiting five, 10 years down the road and decide that, you know what, we probably should have did that, let's go ahead and do that now, and it costs us double or triple or even quadruple of what it costs today. So I just wanted to give you that information. And I don't know if you want to act on it now or not, I'll leave that up to you, but I wanted to give you that information, and I'll try to answer any questions you have of that, and then I'll move on to the next phase.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
What is, is it a geographical situation that calls for Lancaster to have three towers and we only have two?
We have three towers, they have five. They actually have five in their county. They did not need all five of those, but I think the board wanted to keep extra towers in the county, so that's how they ended up.
Are we still using the state police tower, Surprise Hill?
The Navy Tower.
Navy Tower.
Yes, sir. So our three towers are Surprise Hill Navy Tower, the Tower at Heatsville, the School, and Lotsburg. And then we have connection with the regional radio system through Lotsburg, through Warsaw, and through Lancaster to the State Police Tower in Matthews. And even if we split the cell, we still have that redundancy because of the microwave connections. We don't lose that if we split the cell. The microwave system, as it is designed, would not change. I do not know at this point if Chief Smith has taken it to the board at Lancaster, because he has several change orders already in place that he wanted to take everything at one time. I would only imagine that if we elected to split the cell and they did not, that you may come back and then elect to stay as we are instead of picking up the total bill, which is $212,871.
I know Greg is pretty hard on me. The only thing that I got on this is that they're pretty much still in the configuration and the design phase of the system. And I kind of feel that, you know, they presented us with something that was, would work, but was not the best for both counties. And I kind of feel that, you know, that's something maybe they needs to kind of take care of some as well. You know, I've gone through this with them before, and I know sometimes you got to fuss a little bit, but they also ate a lot, lot of the changes that they wanted and ate the costs that go along with it. And this is the first large regional radio system that L3 Harris has put together in localities like this. So it's been benefiting them just as much as it's benefiting us by having their services here in the system. I mean, it's, it's making them shine. So I was kind of hoping that Greg would put a little more pressure on them to either get that down a little bit or get them to absorb the costs themselves. Do the best you can on that.
And we've asked for a breakdown of what that $79,000 actually entails. I know they told us on the call what it entails, but we wanted it in writing. And the engineer asked them to sharpen their pencil and come back with a better price. So they're working on that.
That's advantage of having federal. They, they, they don't have a dog in the fight. They're hired, Lancaster's hired, and who else has gone?
The regional radio system.
Regional radio system. They're there to protect our interests. So it's, they're good people.
So we're hoping, hopeful that it does come back lower, but I wanted to give you the starting price anyway so that you have something to work with. If it comes back lower, that'd be great, and that's what we're shooting for.
Okay. Do we have a questions?
Look, you got it?
Yes, sir.
Will this system give us a little better coverage in our low line areas, like down below the Suffolk Skiff?
According to their map, yes, sir. And I have the map here. So basically, everything you see in green on that map is coverage of the regional radio system.
Well, I'm used to seeing maps like that with a cell service.
Yeah. So there are some spots throughout the county that you can see on this map that are dead spots, and the contract calls for 95% acceptance on that with a portable. So we would, at that point, when we get into the acceptance testing, we're going by gridlines throughout the county and doing testing each one. So right now, the projection is yes, we would have that coverage, but until we get into the testing of that, we won't know for sure. But it's also in the contract that if it doesn't meet that 95%, that Harris has to get it to that point at their own cost.
Okay.
So a dead spot is not, not going to be what you're thinking?
I'm thinking areas that traditionally are below the Suffolk Skiff.
With, with this system, you're either going to have it all or nothing. Okay, so it'll be no static, no fade out, no nothing. It's 100% clear, or you get nothing.
Nothing.
And more than likely, and your mobiles, deputies in the mobiles will have 100% coverage countywide. Your handheld, if you have a dead spot, I may have a dead spot with a handheld right here, but I could take a step to the left or the right or what have you, and I've got 100% coverage. So it's, it's not wide areas, typically it's not wide areas that doesn't have any coverage like we used to. It's, you may be in a car, and if you happen to talk on handheld, you may have to go from here to the back wall, and you got it. So the technology in all this system is way above what we ever had here.
That's good to hear.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Alderson?
All right, I'll move on to the, to the next part of this.
Next one, yeah?
So with the towers that I talked about, two of those are owned by a company, ATC, Lotsburg and Heatsville. And we currently have radio equipment on both of those towers, as well as the Navy Tower, as you know. Mr. Tadlock and Mr. Basie have found the lease agreements that we have with both of those towers from previous users, I'll say, and they have kept up through the years. So when we got into applications with ATC of putting the new equipment on those towers, they came back to us with a cost of renting. And like I said, Mr. Tadlock and Mr. Basie found those initial agreements. We sent those to our county attorney to look at, to tell us, should we be paying a lease or not? And in that document, he didn't feel that we had to, so we sent that to ATC. Their legal team looked at it along with our application, and unfortunately, in that lease agreement, it specifies a certain distance on the tower of 200 foot center line, and it's five foot above that and five foot below that is what we have a no lease charge on. Unfortunately, with our current, our new radio system, it's going to be pieces below that and pieces above that with both the radio and the microwave system. So they have come back to us with their new terms, with pricing for rental on each tower. So the Lotsburg Tower would cost us $4,053.61, and the Heatsville Tower would cost us $6,988.80. Those two towers total up to $11,042.41. If you calculate that over 12 months, it's $132,508.92.
Say that again?
Is that a month?
That's a year.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Say that again.
It's $11,042.41 a month. Multiply that times 12, it's 132. Multiply that times 12, it's 132,508.92.
What are we paying the Navy?
We do not, to my knowledge, pay them anything, and they have been very slow to respond. We have given them all the same information as to what would go on that tower, as well as some questions we had about the shelter. The contact that I had felt that there was not going to be an issue with us putting anything on their towers, and he told me, and he said, "Y'all, y'all can do whatever you need to do to that part of the shelter that you all have." He said, "But I can't make that decision, and it has to go to my bosses in Washington," and that's where it's sitting right now. And it has been sitting since.
It used to be some kind of...
Before the holidays.
Some kind of agreement, may have been verbal, but the first one up, there used to be an agreement where we kind of police it, where they let us put our stuff up there, kind of police it.
Yeah, from what I understand, I think we take care of the lights that's on there, from what I've been told. So we're still waiting to hear back from them. It didn't feel like there would be anything, but again, we're still waiting to get something back from them.
Why is the difference between the two towers' price?
Um, the amount of, the amount of equipment and the size of the equipment.
So you put different equipment on?
Yes, sir.
You don't put the same equipment on both towers?
No, sir. The, the equipment going on the Heatsville Tower is larger and is more of it because it's receiving from multiple directions, then processing that, if you will, and then shooting it via the microwave to the dispatch center over here at Sheriff's Office.
Could you give the cost per tower again?
Sure. The Loxburg Tower is $4,053.61. Heatsville Tower is $6,988.80.
Okay. Thank you.
So the reason I wanted to bring this to your attention is we need the lease agreements with ATC for Heatsville and Loxburg to move forward. If we don't get the lease agreements, then we are not able to get money from Bank of America, correct?
That's correct.
That's a lot of money to rent tower space.
You're looking at 132,508.92 a year.
Yes, sir. Not a cost that I was anticipating, and I don't think anyone, either in the planning phase or in this room, was expecting that.
They, and I know why they, they've gone above and below, but they can't use the free space at all. It's nothing that L3 Harris can do to use the space that we have to work in. Is it because it's loaded, or is it because they need the elevation for the microwave shots?
I believe it's the elevation for the microwave, as well as the radio antennas themselves. And then also, they have to work around what we currently have in order to get the new system up and running. So we can't take down what we currently have until all of that is up and running and is solid and has been signed off.
So was it, has it been a tower analysis done on those two towers?
Not yet. The structural analysis should be done here shortly.
Okay, because a lot of times when they do that, they identify items on the towers that, that could come down. And I'll give you a good example. A lot of times, like if a cellphone company goes up, AT&T would go up and use space on a tower, and they no longer use that tower, but they never would go back or didn't go back or weren't required to go back and take down their equipment. So it's still up there. So the next person that wants that space has to pay to have it removed to add their stuff. And I didn't know if it was a situation where, once you get your tower analysis completed and get the results back, if it was stuff up there that we could maybe use that as a negotiation to get that space, if we pay to take it down to help maybe reduce these costs.
Yeah, I'm not sure. You know, I, I don't even want to take a stab at what the cost would be of having to pay someone to get that down, and would it be, which one would be more cost effective for the county, you know?
Well, it's, none of it's cheap, but it's, it's a one-time cost to get the equipment down.
Right.
And this is a monthly cost to continue to lose.
Right, a recurring cost.
And I know a lot of times in wording with, with towers, when they come into these counties, it's negotiated for free space, but another knew that was that a height restriction or anything was on it.
So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. The county attorney sent Mr. Tadlock and myself an email and said that he thought we were good to move forward, depending on how the board wanted to approach it, after he looked at the original agreements.
As Chief Paulson alluded to, it is, Bank of America is requiring copies of these lease agreements in order for them to release further payments. We do have two invoices, as we're progressing through this project, we do have two invoices that are stacked now, waiting to be, to be moved through. So it is holding up certain portions of the project.
Do we have any choice?
Not unless you can identify another tower that's going to let you have free space. Then they're gonna have to go back and do coverage maps of that?
From, from that tower.
Is the sheriff's department tower still on?
This one back here, yeah. But the guides on that one are?
Yeah, we don't have too much choice, too. Not much at all.
Is it just the guides, how about the general structure of the tower?
I'm not sure. I, I don't, don't know that much about the towers, but I don't know that that one would support the weight of the equipment.
And the reason I say no is Lancaster had identified the radio station tower as one of theirs, and when the microwave company came out to do the path survey, they had identified that that tower would not, just looking at it, hold the microwave dishes that would need to go on it. And then when he ran the path survey, it was blocked to Surprise Hill. So we weren't going to be able to get that, that link. So the backup to that, they moved to Good Luck Road Tower.
Okay. I guess we're lucky we got the Navy Tower.
Yes, sir.
Mm-hmm. Very lucky. And hope it stays that way.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. State police still on, other one on Miss Surprise Hill?
Yes, sir, as far as I know.
They took that from Marine Resource Commission.
And that one is of the same design and build as the radio station tower. That's a guide tower also.
All right, so you're looking for a decision as quickly as possible?
Um, I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but we, we probably need to make a decision on the, on the towers at least, and then, you know, you have the information on splitting the cells. We can, you know, determine that, or if you want to take action, that's totally up to you all, but I wanted to give that information to you so that you would have some thought process on it. But as Mr. Tadlock said, we have two bills currently waiting to be paid for the microwave company, MNI, that we can't access the money until we have the lease agreements with, with the ATC.
So, and that's for any invoice that comes in from now on, that, that's not just MNI, that's L3 Harris or?
No, I purposely been holding off ordering the pagers and portable radios for the fire departments and rescue squads, because I did not want to have another bill sitting there that we weren't able to pay.
Yeah.
If, if we did get that. I know, I know that I brought a lot of ask to you. The other thing that I just wanted to remind you of is the sheriff did us a huge favor when he received his grant back last year and was able to purchase the radios for the sheriff's department. And I think that was well over $100,000 that he saved us in that radio budget that could be used either for splitting the cell or the first year of the tower lease.
So it's money to take care of upgrade.
And then I believe, Mr. Tadlock, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we do have contingency money in that for the entire, what we put into, to finance through Bank of America.
All right, so you want a motion?
Mostly on the, the lease agreement, since that is more than what we were anticipating.
Yeah.
I just want direction from the board to be able to move forward with that.
You want a motion for 132,508.92. Were those leases subject to increase every year, 10 years?
There were five-year leases that were renewed on a five-year interval, up to five times or beyond. If I'm, if memory serves me correctly, it was a limited amount of the five years. I did not see in there anywhere, mainly because of those lease agreements, we're talking about the leasing paying the county at that point in time, the monthly rates. I did not see anywhere of an increase on the county side of that, for that. That may be spelled out a little bit better when we get the lease agreements back from ATC, because they're kind of, they're waiting for us to approve this part of it before they finalize the lease agreement.
Looks like we need to go ahead and proceed with the lease agreement. And I'd offer us, luckily we'd do that so we can get some money flowing. Get the ball rolling? Without the money flowing, we're dead in the water. So I guess my motion is to go ahead and proceed with the lease agreement. Do you want a dollar amount in that, or is it needed now?
Um, you could put that in there as part of that, with the understanding, of course, that after the five years, it's the initial agreement that we're looking at, so.
So motion is to proceed with the lease agreement. It's 132,508.92 for a five-year term, which will be probably negotiated later. Is that agreeable with the board?
No choice.
You need a second? I need a second. I have a second. All right, I got a motion, a second. Any other discussion? If not, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? All right, there you go.
Thank you. I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Oh, you done enough.
Yeah.
Like I say, I hate to be the bearer of bad news and bring this to you, but...
But I do expect 10 bucks now.
Okay. All right. Hopefully, as we go through this, there won't be too many change orders. I would think once we get past the design review and once that's finalized, change orders should be very minimal, if any. But I just want to preface you all to say that there may be a change order or two. For example, if you decide to split the cell, that would be a change order that would then have to be approved by you.
All right. What's, what's your thoughts on that?
As far as splitting the cell, I, I'm for splitting the cell. Originally, to my own admittance, when I received the radio and the sheriff told me, you know, we've got five channels, and it kind of gave me a highlighted view on it, I assumed, which I shouldn't have, I assumed that we were just talking about Northumberland County, but as we got reading through that, realized it was a single cell.
Aye for both.
And Chief Smith from Lancaster is also in favor of splitting the cell? Yes, sir. Now, again, like I said, that ultimately is up to the board in Lancaster, as you know, so they, I, I don't know what that would end up, for or against. But in simplicity, yes, he is for splitting it as well, based on the same concerns.
All right, any other questions? Chief Paulson, thank you for the explanation.
Well, thank you all for the time. I appreciate it. And thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, luckily, I got one board member that's curfew at 5:30.
All right. Do you all want to talk about the mobile food vendor policy or carry that over?
Let's, let's, I, I think we can talk about it, Kevin. Shouldn't be too, I think we got it down almost, we just need to finalize it. Let's talk about it, Kevin. I think the last question I had on it, when we left it, was, do we open this up? This is taking place on Northumberland County property. Do we open it up to people other than Northumberland County residents? And I ask that because it's a possibility somebody from Tapahama or Richmond, Cold Pepper could want to take advantage of it and use it. But I'll, I'll say this, when dealing with enforcement aspects, no matter how big or how small, I've found it in the past to be much easier dealing with local residents rather than have to communicate to Tim Buck, too, and work with or try to get means of reimbursements or whatever it might be from people away from here. I say, there again, do you limit it to Northumberland County residents? Do you limit it to state residents? Maybe somebody from Maryland wants to come down and, and sell hamburgers and hot dogs. Try and nip everything in the bud, so we got a good understanding before we get started.
I think we got enough food vendors in Northumberland County that deserve the right, if they choose to have a spot there, to...
Residents.
Yes.
Residents. It's, I noticed the, the form's got your address on it, but it doesn't specify...
After all, we're trying to support local businesses here in the county.
Yes, and it's on county property.
North County property.
There's a whole lot of these that drive down Hacks Neck Road and knock on somebody's door, and it is going in the other side of Richmond somewhere, and get after somebody that left a bunch of equipment here and a whole lot of junk.
I still have concern as to who's going to police the site.
It's a good question.
Well, the health department will take care of the food side.
But as far as trash cleanup and is this vendor in the site he's supposed to be in? Is he overstated his time limit? Those types of things.
Well, I, I, I think that's a necessary thing, but at the same time, a simple clause in the rules and regulations, there's any variance from these rules and regulations could mean immediate dismissal, immediate dismissal from your place. There again, when he leaves, you're stuck with whatever trash you left. But when he has that hammer hanging over his head saying, "If I don't clean up my trash tonight, I might not be here tomorrow." Well, it's number 15 basically says that. Board of Supervisors are... As far as any other control, I don't know what it might be. The good part is, we can dismiss them from there for any reason, any... The good part is, we can dismiss them from there for any reason, anytime. If it begins to be a problem to the county, then let's just get rid of it.
But we're still having to address who's going to actually do it. Who's going to be up there going by looking and checking on to it?
Well, I'm sure that the going by and checking will be done by the citizens. If they see something they don't like, they're going to call Luttrell's office.
About it two or three times a day.
Yeah, we all buy them. We all go buy it, and most of us do. I'm buying Jimmy's mind.
Luttrell gets one or two calls and it's not taken care of in a proper manner, and it begins to be a hindrance, get rid of it.
I think to help with this process, I don't think we need to commit to do this once we do it forever. I think we need to try it this summer.
On a temporary basis.
And see how it goes. It may not be anyone interested in doing this, it may be one. We don't know until we try it.
I see Bond Seafood has a truck of kale on there.
They've bought that piece of property there, and that's where he'll be setting up.
Yeah.
But at least we're trying to take county property and make good use of it for now. And we don't want to be obligated to this thing because we may have other use for this property later on. So I think it, I mean, I think we ought to try to do it in the summer, for the summer, or the time limit that Luttrell's got on it, and let's go from there. As far as forty johns, anything like that, I don't think we ought to allow these people to have any type of picnic table, table there to allow people to sit and eat. Because if you have places for them to sit and eat, then you, you need to provide them with a place to go to the restaurant. If it's to go.
And then you got a bigger issue with trash.
Yes, and if it's, if it's to go, they ought to come and get it and go, either sit in the vehicle and eat, or go off-site and eat. And that's, I think that will take care of the forty john. I look at Gary Hamlin, has got the same situation up there on his property. They don't have forty johns up there. You come and pick your food up, you can sit in the parking lot and eat, or you can take it with you. And same thing with Bond.
So what kind of trial period are you considering?
I think do it, do it through the.
Through Labor Day, maybe?
That's fine, if you want to do that, or early fall. I think John went to barbecue truck, he, he ended up, finished his up in November, correct? I mean, we could do, into that timeframe, and, you know, and just say, this is going to be on a trial basis, and we're going to try it this year.
With the, with the.
From this month to this month, and.
With the clear understanding that at any time, for any reason, we can shut it down?
Yes.
Clear understanding?
Yes. In that way, you know, if it's not done right, we don't have to put up with it.
So the way we had that word, it was, once they made application, it was good for six months. So you want to remove this six months and just allow three individuals the opportunity to put their food truck there for?
Like April to November.
Food trucks operate in this county almost year-round now.
They do.
Yeah.
But I'm just thinking, taking baby steps, just thinking, just see where it goes. And we're not getting over our heads.
So the way it was worded originally, they would apply and they would get six months from the application date, or the, or the approval of the application?
The approval of the application. And then it would be on a rotational basis from there. But what we can do, if you'd rather, we can strike that language and put April to, to November for this initial period.
Whatever y'all want to do, I'm just throwing ideas in there.
I like that as a trial run.
Yeah. Try it, say I like it, if we don't like it, we cut it off.
And we don't need a rhyme or reason to do it?
Nope, we don't need any reason to do it. And I'll have to deal with Fred Paul.
Fred's all right. Little grizzly, but he's all right.
Just got to get grizzly with him.
Yeah, I ain't working for Fred Paul.
All right, you all want to approve that with those changes? And that this is for Northumberland residents only?
Yeah.
All right, so you want a motion to approve?
Now, that's, excuse me for interrupting.
Sorry.
But that means a resident, that's anybody that owns property. They don't necessarily have to live here all year, but if they own property.
Right.
That we're looking at, okay.
A motion to approve food truck ordinance.
Policy.
Policy, I'm sorry. Policy for Northumberland County residents from April to November of twenty-four.
And this is strictly for the property located at the?
Yeah, at, at whatever address that is. Put, you got the address?
I'm trying to.
What is it? That's Kirk Elementary School, used to be, I don't know what the address is.
Ah, it's.
Twenty-one seventy-four Northumberland Highway.
Yeah, twenty-one seventy-four, yeah. Put the address on to it. Did we say anything about signage here?
Yeah, I was going to ask you about that.
Um, I thought it was something in here about signage, but before I finished the motion, it's.
They need to remove the signage each day.
All right, that's fine. Leave, leave everything else in that same, if that's, that's my motion.
Yeah, mobile food vendors must remove equipment and any signage from their assigned spot daily. No overnight parking is allowed.
And then no fees and additional taxes involved with this?
We, we did not set up a fee or anything.
Okay.
And I can, if the board wishes to include that in the motion, on the signage, that all signage must be within that, their space, that it can't be out on the main road or any, anywhere like that.
Yes.
We'll, we'll address that, uh, clean that number six up.
There's a large sign out there in the middle of that grassy area from the community college. I guess it's an old sign that's never been removed.
It's gone now?
No, it's there.
Still there?
I looked at it, I went around, looked at the spot today.
Okay.
Smoked it over, and that sign is right there.
I was just, I was just thinking, it wasn't there.
Yeah, I had some extra time, so I went on my panel.
That's fine.
So as it stands, the trial period when, November one or, or the end of November? What do we say?
Let's amend that motion to April one, twenty-four till November, what's it, thirtieth to twenty-four?
Thirty, thirty in November.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be fine, break it down.
And then if we have a vendor that wants to continue using that spot after November, if we choose to allow that, we could at that point, right?
We could, we could allow someone to stay, stay there. All right, all I need is a second.
Second.
All right, any other discussion? Anything else? As time talks, but, all right, if not, all of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of us against? All right. One more question.
Could we talk about the wood debris bid real quick? If you have time, I don't want to hold you up.
No, I'm good. I just free to leave myself enough time to get to Tapahannock.
Previously, we, the board had authorized moving forward in advertising this, but I would like to go ahead and get this out. But there was some discussion as far as accountability when the equipment fails and trying to get that debris out of the chipped debris off-site. So what we did, we, we added on the last page, section four point three point eight. In the event of mechanical breakdown, contractors shall notify the county if this will result in no shredding operations for more than one consecutive week. In the event non-performance of shredding operations succeeds fifteen days consecutively, the county will prorate payments based on the number of days of non-shredding operations until service is fully restored and there is no remaining buildup of wood debris. What we were going after there is, we looked at several options of either weighing the loads or doing cubic yardage or different things. And we felt like maybe this would be the, the better route to go rather than trying to figure out a way, weigh the, the debris versus having somebody go down there and actually put eyes on it and look at how many cubic yards is being chipped.
What do y'all think?
I guess probably the better process is what, what we would have been left with, what we've been doing.
Yeah, right now, it's, it's open-ended, it's monthly payments. There's really no recourse back on it, so.
And we didn't get much ground in last year. So, yeah, I think we need to leave that in there.
All right, the, the other thing that we did do in this is it puts the, this would be set more up as a contract where he would provide the full service, the employees and the equipment. Right now, the county does supply the, the employees down there. We, we pay the, they are actually on payroll for the county. We would like to get away from that. So it's just a contractual basis with them, and he provides the individuals that would run that, that operation down there.
That would relieve us some liability too, wouldn't it?
Yes. Yes, he can get the same, same people to work if he wants to. Something to help us.
You'd like to go on and get that out?
If, if that language is fine with the board, I, with that change, since it did change from the last time we brought it, I'd want to bring that to the board.
You want it?
Uh, moved it, we moved forward with the wood debris bid. Has Mr. Tadlock presented it to us?
All right. Got a motion? Do you want, y'all want a second?
Got a second.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of us against? All right, got that taken care of.
All right, the other item in there is the old courthouse painting bid. I don't know if the board wants to look at that or not at this point. But after the discussion yesterday or last night, we did put that together fairly quickly today to try and get that out, if the board wishes to move forward with that. Or if you want more time to, to review that, that, that's fine.
So you got all work to be completed by fifteenth of June? I think we need to go ahead and go with it, see what kind of bids we can get. No, we used to keep setting on to it, go in, let Luttrell go in, get it advertised, and see what we can get.
And this is just strictly the outside painting. We'll, we'll start working on some of the other items too, but we want to go on and get, get started.
Because if we get it approved now and get it okay, it's still a month away, then we're into March.
A month away.
Then if we wait now, and the next thing you know, we'll be into April and May, then we're going to be behind eight months, and everybody's going to be booked up.
Motion to go ahead and allow Luttrell to request bids for the painting of the outside of the courthouse.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against? All right.
And I'm sorry, who made the motion? Did, did you make?
Yeah.
You made the motion, okay.
And Chip, Chip seconded, yeah.
Got, got, got him.
All right, you got anything else, Luttrell?
Uh, just two updates. The board had asked for information on the budget amendment. We mostly have that together. The only items that we were looking further into were the comp board positions for the salary adjustments for that portion of the budget amendment that we were considering last night. I reached out to comp board and got some additional information that I needed for that, and so we, we should have that information for the board fairly, fairly shortly, so. That, that gets a little complicated as far as whether that's coming out of the general fund or whether that's coming from comp board, because not all of the positions in the sheriff's office or treasurer's office or commission of revenue may be all comp board funded positions. Some of them are county funded positions. So we're trying to break that out for the board, so you have a true picture of what, what's coming out of what. Just wanted to update you on that. And then I had sent out an email just letting the board know about the ACH payments that we are migrating to ACH payments versus paper checks for vendor payments. The system does allow that. Mary Dotson has been looking into that further. She will need some help from the department heads as far as getting vendor payment information. We, we continue having trouble with the postal service. This was one reason that we were looking at that. We did have some payments that went out on time after the check register was approved the day after. Checks were sent out the day after, but they received the payment late. Previously, we had not had any issues with those, but for some reason, we, we've started seeing some late payments pop up. So Mary started looking at some other options, and the option was ACH payments, do vendor payments. So would save on some check costs in the future, plus there's been some issues with check washing going on, so that would prohibit that from happening as well.
Yeah, I got some, I got some invoices, monthly invoices have been sent out, January, February, March, April, May, twenty-three. Just came back. Now, I'm up to June, it's just coming back. People have been saying they haven't got it, haven't got it. Just got it returned back. Nothing wrong with address. The postal system is not helping us any. They need to make changes in it, or something has to be done.
Right from the top. It's not, it's not the post, it's not the post office. It's not the post offices.
The governor's asked to come meet with Sandston area.
Yeah.
And they've not replied back to him.
My wife said there's tractor trailers that back with mail into them, two months old.
Wow.
And they've got, they, they used, they used forklifts to run up and down the hallways of Sandston to deliver the mail like, like these old catalog places do. They said they got boxes piled up, they can't even use, can't use the forklifts.
Well, see, all that mail sitting there, anything, any, any bill into it's already like charges on to it. Any perishable items down?
Our old treasurer told us at the December meeting that Sandston was not being used anymore. She's wrong, it is still being used. It is still being, it's not used as much, they moved a lot of it to Goochlin or something, but it is still being used. Never closed.
Ever, they got to get a handle on this. And it all, like Junior said, it all starts at the top.
My wife comes home at nighttime wringing her hands because of the stupid stuff they have to do before opening and closing, and things they have to do with political mail, and reports that have to be made on time, or you get fined or penalized, and people complaining day and night about not getting their mail in their pockets.
All right, if you don't have anything else, I think we need to keep meeting open. It's all right for everybody.
Okay.
And we do have a meeting on the twenty-ninth, unless you want to see if we're making some changes, Luttrell, for the other two members.
That, that's up to the board.
One of them's got a doctor's appointment, and the other one's scared to come.
He's so scared, he's so scared he's going to leave the country.
So, if you want to.
That's so wrong.
If you want to check on that, check on change dates.
Okay. I, you want me to look entirely as far as the board of supervisors first, or reach out to the school board?
I guess reach out to them, see what they can do.
Okay.
And if we can get it to next week after, after Junior gets back.
Yeah, I'll be back on like fourth.
Yeah, I'll be back on that fourth, I think.
Yeah, anytime after the fourth.
All right, I think we were trying to schedule the Dominion on the fourth.
All right. What other?
Had they, had they agreed to come on the fourth?
I'd, I'd need to reach out to them, get that confirmed.
Fifth, sixth, seventh, whatever. What have you come up with?
Something like that.
All right, we'll, we'll look at the calendar and see what we can come up with.
So, motion to carry over till basically twenty-ninth of this month.
Second.
All right, motion's second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for coming.